I don't know. Are we ready to get the show on the road there?
Oh.
Oh, the video's up. We're missing a microphone for the...
Yeah, but you can use that one and then I guess we can just kind of shift over.
Oh, yeah. There we go. All right. I'm glad you said something because people are going to have a hard time hearing her. All right. Good evening, everybody. Welcome to Monday, November 13th, to our City Council meeting. And one of my three more to go for me after tonight. I invite you to join me in some mindfulness breathing before we start the meeting tonight. Please participate if you want. You can start with feeling how you're sitting in your chair, putting your feet on the floor, getting situated and feeling, just recognizing how your body feels in this room or if you're watching from home, and start noticing your breath. We start leaning into our breath and paying attention to it. Our body tends to relax and we become more present. Take a deep breath. Let that out. Just how your neck is feeling, maybe move it side to side. We're going to take three or four breaths on your own. I recommend breathing in on four and exhaling on five. Maybe you are noticing the sounds around you. We have a full house tonight. Really enjoy these mindfulness moments with everybody starting the meetings this way. Helps us come grounded together, feel the energy in the room as we're all here in some shape or form or another to help make our community better and celebrate what makes us us, what makes the people of our community makes our community. All right. So concluding that, if you want to shake out your shoulders, I'll invite you to join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, can we have roll call, please?
James.
Here.
Leaks May.
Here.
Mikulski.
Here.
Pollocka.
Here.
Piana.
Here. All right, next up is the approval of the agenda.
Mayor, I move that we approve the agenda as presented.
Second. Moved by Leaks May and seconded by James.
Leaks May.
Yes.
James.
Yes.
Mikulski.
Yes.
Pollocka.
Yes.
Piana.
Yes. Moving on to presentations, and we have two tonight. The first one is 4A, is the 2023 Ferndale Community Foundation and Ferndale Pride Grant Distribution. And joining the podium is Councilman Pollocka and of course, Julia Music from Ferndale Pride.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Yep, I'm here on behalf of the Ferndale Community Foundation. Every year we give out a number of grants to our community nonprofits. And this year, we are giving out $14,500 that we've raised with the assistance of Ferndale Pride. And just to let you know that there's a number of people I want to recognize tonight who are on the Board of Directors. We have Ginny Davis. We have Sharon Chess. We have Joe Gacho. Who we're missing tonight is our Chairperson, Dan Martin, our Vice Chair, Judy Palmer, Anatoly Askanagi, and Dennis Whitey. I believe I have everybody. So first off, I want to have a representative from Fern Care. Is there anybody from Fern Care here? Nope. Okay. I didn't think there would be, as Dan Martin was going to be the representative for Fern Care. Ferndale Community Concert Band. Thank you. Ferndale Seniors. So just to let you know, the Community Concert Band, their grant was for their materials, a lot of published material, I believe, and graphic design. And the Ferndale Seniors, their grant was requesting funds for eliminating the stigma behind mental health and how it affects seniors. The next grant goes to Michigan Stage. And this grant is to support their programs for plays for youth, youth plays. And the last one we have is Southeast Oakland Coalition. And their grant is to support speakers for youth groups and impacted youth. So, thank you. And now I'm going to turn it over to Ms. Julia Music.
So we also have some grants that go directly to LGBT organizations that operate within Ferndale. So if there's a representative from Matrix here, I, oh, come on up, great. I wasn't sure if you were going to be here. Affirmations. Access. Gender Identity Network. You'll accept it for him. And then also, while you're up here, TG Detroit as well.
Okay.
And Transgender Michigan.
Can we do the picture now or the website?
We can do the picture now because then you can go into, because the website's actually the second item.
Okay. Well, we are all here and then I also hope you stay for the second thing. Let's do a quick picture. So if you are a representative of any of those organizations, please come up into the front so we can get some photos. And then we're going to talk about Pride a little.
Oh, please do. Maybe our photographer in the room can help stage you all. Sorry to put you on the spot.
But we also need to, but you also need to be together.
Thanks, Cara.
Cara, come play share. Cara?
Yes.
How's Ginny?
I'm coming.
Joe, go by Greg and then we can see you.
Right there. Yeah, right there.
Oh, he saw behind.
Thank you.
Good job. So as of tonight, we have now given away over $350,000 in 14 years through events like Ferndale Pride and some of our newer events like the Ferndale Golf Scramble. So I want to thank everyone who has attended those events, has sponsored those events, and especially our volunteers who help make these events happen, many of which who are in the room today. If you are a Ferndale Pride volunteer, can you please either stand up or wave? I know you all love being put on the spot. Our volunteers. 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 Our volunteers.
I don't know. Are we ready to get the show on the road there?
Oh.
Oh, the video's up. We're missing a microphone for the...
Yeah, but you can use that one and then I guess we can just kind of shift over.
Oh, yeah. There we go. All right. I'm glad you said something because people are going to have a hard time hearing her. All right. Good evening, everybody. Welcome to Monday, November 13th, to our City Council meeting. And one of my three more to go for me after tonight. I invite you to join me in some mindfulness breathing before we start the meeting tonight. Please participate if you want. You can start with feeling how you're sitting in your chair, putting your feet on the floor, getting situated and feeling, just recognizing how your body feels in this room or if you're watching from home, and start noticing your breath. We start leaning into our breath and paying attention to it. Our body tends to relax and we become more present. Take a deep breath. Let that out. Just how your neck is feeling, maybe move it side to side. We're going to take three or four breaths on your own. I recommend breathing in on four and exhaling on five. Maybe you are noticing the sounds around you. We have a full house tonight. Two more breaths. Deep inhale. Exhale. Really enjoy these mindfulness moments with everybody starting the meetings this way. Helps us come grounded together, feel the energy in the room as we're all here in some shape or form or another to help make our community better and celebrate what makes us us, what makes the people of our community makes our community. All right. So concluding that, if you want to shake out your shoulders, I'll invite you to join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, can we have roll call, please?
James.
Here.
Leaks May.
Here.
Mikulski.
Here.
Pollocka.
Here.
Piana.
Here. All right, next up is the approval of the agenda.
Mayor, I move that we approve the agenda as presented.
Second. Moved by Leaks May and seconded by James.
Leaks May.
Yes.
James.
Yes.
Mikulski.
Yes.
Pollocka.
Yes.
Piana.
Yes. Moving on to presentations, and we have two tonight. The first one is 4A, is the 2023 Ferndale Community Foundation and Ferndale Pride Grant Distribution. And joining the podium is Councilman Pollocka and of course, Julia Music from Ferndale Pride.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Yep, I'm here on behalf of the Ferndale Community Foundation. Every year we give out a number of grants to our community nonprofits. And this year, we are giving out $14,500 that we've raised with the assistance of Ferndale Pride. And just to let you know that there's a number of people I want to recognize tonight who are on the Board of Directors. We have Ginny Davis. We have Sharon Chess. We have Joe Gacho. Who we're missing tonight is our Chairperson, Dan Martin, our Vice Chair, Judy Palmer, Anatoly Askanagi, and Dennis Whitey. I believe I have everybody. So first off, I want to have a representative from Fern Care. Is there anybody from Fern Care here? Nope. Okay. I didn't think there would be, as Dan Martin was going to be the representative for Fern Care. Ferndale Community Concert Band.
Thank you.
Thank you. Ferndale Seniors. So just to let you know, the Community Concert Band, their grant was for their materials, a lot of published material, I believe, and graphic design. And the Ferndale Seniors, their grant was requesting funds for eliminating the stigma behind mental health and how it affects seniors. The next grant goes to Michigan Stage. And this grant is to support their programs for plays for youth, youth plays. And the last one we have is Southeast Oakland Coalition. And their grant is to support speakers for youth groups and impacted youth. So, thank you. And now I'm going to turn it over to Ms. Julia Music.
So we also have some grants that go directly to LGBT organizations that operate within Ferndale. So if there's a representative from Matrix here, I, oh, come on up, great. I wasn't sure if you were going to be here.
Thank you very much.
Affirmations. Access. You'll accept it for him. And then also, while you're up here, TG Detroit as well.
Okay.
And Transgender Michigan.
Can we do the picture now or the website?
We can do the picture now because then you can go into, because the website's actually the second item.
Okay. Well, we are all here and then I also hope you stay for the second thing. Let's do a quick picture. So if you are a representative of any of those organizations, please come up into the front so we can get some photos. And then we're going to talk about Pride a little.
Oh, please do. Maybe our photographer in the room can help stage you all. Sorry to put you on the spot.
But we don't want to see you looking off. We can actually sit a little further back.
But you also need to, but you also need to be together.
Thanks, Cara.
Come up a little bit. Oh, Cara, come play share. Okay, Cara? Yes. How's Ginny?
I'm coming.
We got to squeeze Joe in here. Remember.
Keep Joe.
Right there. Yeah, right there.
Oh, he saw behind.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good job. So as of tonight, we have now given away over $350,000 in 14 years through events like Ferndale Pride and some of our newer events like the Ferndale Golf Scramble. So I want to thank everyone who has attended those events, has sponsored those events, and especially our volunteers who help make these events happen, many of which who are in the room today. If you are a Ferndale Pride volunteer, can you please either stand up or wave? I know you all love being put on the spot. Our volunteers. I know you all love being put on the spot. Our volunteers put a significant amount of work in to make Pride exactly what it has become, so I really appreciate their help. And I wanted to show you our new website, so to move into the next item. We are very fortunate, how do I switch to this? It's just that screen, not this screen? Gotcha. Okay. So we are very fortunate this, over the last few years, to have a volunteer designing all of our Pride materials. And we were able to raise enough funds to hire her to create a new website for us. So Jaski Designs, which is Jesse Eskelson, who's right here today, put together this new website for us, and it's incredible. And the reason why I love it so much is because it really shows off what our event does, but it gives a great idea of what a lot of our locations at Pride, or locations in Ferndale are like. So to give you some ideas, this year, we had a new children's area. It was updated with some new activities such as reading with royalty, where children were read to throughout the entire, almost the entire event. Feddy Drop was featured. Our new climbing tower will be featured next year, but we did have a new climbing tower. And we're planning to build this area out. And so with this new website, you can see all the different things that we have going on at the children's area. We're excited that we have events coming up very soon. So if anyone wants to join us for our Night of Black Leather at GG's, that is our next event, and it's coming up on December 6th. And then we'll go over to Euclid the Elks, our psychic self-care event, and a lot of our classic events are already listed, but there's even more than this. So tons of stuff going on to help keep you going through the winter, help us raise money for the next Pride event. And then as you go into these events, you can see some of our really amazing locations in Ferndale. Like here's our Cougar Hunt. Angelica from the Elks raised over $3,000 for Pride this year as a cougar. And this is the 215 venue being shown off in these beautiful pictures with all our volunteers and our happy partygoers. So we're really excited about this website because we really think it brings people in and shows them exactly what Ferndale Pride's all about. It's very easy for them to get in contact with us through the website. And it answers a lot of those wonderful questions that people have about Pride and why we do what we do the way we do it. So if you're interested in getting involved with Pride, you can sign up here, you can come back to see our events, and you can learn how you can become a sponsor and a vendor as we move through those processes pretty soon. So I want to ask if there's any questions about our new website before I move on to one other thing. So the other thing we wanted to show you tonight was Ferndale Pride, well, the state of Michigan, Dana Nessel put together a commercial for the state of Michigan and featured really three main cities, Lansing, Detroit, and Ferndale. And so knowing that we're not one of the biggest cities in Michigan, it was pretty exciting to see how we are featured. So I wanted to play that commercial tonight, if that is okay with you, Mayor. Do I have to, I don't know if I have to ask permission or not, but Greg said it was okay, so I assumed.
I'm just perusing your website, it looks fantastic.
Thank you.
Times are tough for LGBTQ communities around the nation this Pride month.
500 anti-LGBTQ.
Before the Governor Ron DeSantis signed.
Missouri, which banned gender-affirming care for minors.
LGBTQ kids and adults feel unsafe and unwanted. But there's one state in America that's reversing this trend. And that state is Michigan. No matter who you love, how you identify, or how you express yourself, you have a place here in Michigan.
We are an equality state, and we're not going back.
You belong here. You belong here.
You belong here.
We belong here.
No, not you. Get out.
Michigan, a state you can be proud to call home.
Proud to pure LGBTQ Michigan. Because we have a seat table for you here.
So if you have not watched that video 3,000 times like I have, I encourage you to watch it, slow it down a little bit, because many of you are in it, especially council members, a lot of you are in it. So what a beautiful testament to what we're doing here in Ferndale. I can't think of anything more lovely than having Dana Nessel, you know, every woman's crush in this state, at least for me, asking for Ferndale to be one of the featured cities. So that was incredible. Since we put our new website up, I've also gotten calls to our office, which is my cellphone, asking a lot of questions about people who want to move, usually to protect their trans children, and they want to know more about Ferndale. So this website has definitely hit really hard as far as like our SEO score being high, and people want to know like directly, I'm coming from another state, why should I move to your city? And I can really speak well to that. So I'm really happy with where Ferndale Pride's going. I look forward to next year, which is June 1st. Please mark your calendars. Also, June 24th, we'll have our golf outing, which is our new big event. And then we have like 44 other events in between. So anytime you want to come party with us, meditate with us, or play trivia with us, we have so many different things going on. So please come out and do some things with Pride this year. Thanks.
Well done, Julia and your team. That made me, that video made me like tear up.
I spent an entire day crying and then calling a different family member and saying, "Watch this with me while I cry with you." So very happy about that video.
All right, we are moving on the agenda, and we're going to the call to audience. We invite people who would like to speak on any topic to come up and speak for three minutes. And if you would like to depart now and exit and not hear the rest of the meeting, this is the time to do it. But if anybody would like to come up to the podium and say what's on your mind and speak for three minutes, you are invited to do so. All right, Sharon, thanks for being the first one.
I'm always the bravest in the bunch, what can I say? I'm Sharon Chess, President of the Ferndale Community Concert Band, but I'm not going to take this three minutes to talk about that, Tim Brennan, well in a few minutes. I wanted to take this opportunity to thank two of the most incredible firemen that came to my house to help with my mother, who at 92 years old was discharged from the hospital with no outside support. I had no idea how I was going to get her in the house. They didn't discharge her with a wheelchair or oxygen, and she was too weak to walk on her own. I called our Ferndale Fire Department and told them of my dilemma, and they put me at rest and assured me that once she was there to call them, they would meet my mom and her husband in front of my house, and they would get her inside the house comfortably and safely. I expected them to do that on the gurney. However, the officer, who I do not remember his name, but he has 18 years seniority on, you know, in the department, like a new husband, picked my mother up from her seat on the passenger side, carried her up our walk, up three steps, through the threshold, and laid her on the bed in our purple room as if she were a new bride. She smiled, she was so thankful, she wasn't in pain or discomfort. He then took her vitals, made sure she was safe and comfortable before departing. And it just, it attests to not only our fire department, but our police officers, who, an officer came to our home upon her death two weeks later, was so comforting and respectful to our situation. And I just can't say enough for our police and firemen. I'm very proud to be here in Ferndale, and I feel very safe and just assured that if anything happens to my husband or myself, that we are in safe hands.
Thank you for sharing that personal story.
Good evening, everybody. As Sharon attested just a second ago, my name is Tim Brennan. I'm the co-founder of the Ferndale Community Concert Band along with Sharon, and this is our ninth season. We're happy to announce our December concert, which will take place on December 10th. It's going to be a great show. The M1 Jazz Collective will begin the show at 2:40 on Sunday afternoon, the 10th, and then the concert band will take over at 3:00 PM. We have a lot of different Christmas music and some traditional Christmas music as well. So I hope to see everybody out at our concert on December 10th. It's free of charge. We do accept donations, though, and I hope to see everybody. Thank you very much.
Hello, everyone. My name is Zoe Bacher. I live on East Woodland Street. And before I say what I came to say, I'm looking at Dean, and I just want to recognize our city clerk for such a wonderfully run election. I worked the election after a couple of years working in Detroit. So smooth, like even little hiccups, we got the ball rolling, we fixed it all up, all of our numbers matched the night, and it was stress-free, and I was home by 10:00 PM, which was wonderful. But a lot of people in this room are not going to be surprised that I come with an idea for improving street safety here in Ferndale. So I'm a member of the Accessibility and Inclusion Advisory Committee Commission, I can never remember which one it is. And in that role, I have had a lot of opportunities to meet many of you and talk about some ideas we have for making our city more accessible to people primarily outside of cars, whether it's working with Cara on campaigns to have our sidewalks better cleared in the winter, or, you know, talking with Ginny, our new downtown Ferndale Executive Director, about ways that we can make our downtown more accessible. But the idea I present today is one that is getting a fair amount of attention recently because it's something Ann Arbor actually enacted in their downtown, which is banning right turn on red at traffic intersections. And we already have that at several intersections here in Ferndale, primarily Nine Mile and Woodward, which is our most busy pedestrian intersection, also where the most people get hit by cars. And many people will know, if you stand there at that corner, you often see people who do not stop and not turn on red. So if we actually did enact a ban, how, how well enforced or how well paid attention to would it be? Hard to say. However, there's a lot of data that suggests that this would actually be a really wonderful thing for pedestrian safety. It's kind of a relic of the 70s, back when highway speed limits were 55 miles an hour to save gas, and federal government made cities get rid of their bans on right turn on red. That kind of stuff, the arguments back then don't really hold up anymore. A lot of cities across America are considering it. It's very popular in Europe, where pedestrian death rates are a lot lower than our own. So I would ask many of you, when you're walking around Ferndale, whether it's at Camborn and Woodward, where I walk a lot, and oftentimes see people who do not come to a proper stop before they turn right on Woodward, do not look for pedestrians, to think, would this intersection be safer to me as someone on foot, in a wheelchair, with a stroller, walking my dog, whatever it is, if drivers actually came to a stop before making a turn? So putting that idea out there, let's consider it for the future with our new folks and our departing folks. Thank you for your service, everyone. Congrats, Mayor Raylon Leaks May, who has been serving with us on the Accessibility and Inclusion Advisory Committee.
Thank you, Zoe, for a great idea.
Hi. My name is Ralph Olson, and I live at 1918 Academy in Ferndale. That's at Academy in Weston. I moved back to Ferndale in 2008. I was born here in 1946, and I moved back to take care of my mother who had dementia. And my neighbor behind me at 1921 College, I've been working with Rachel Garrison, a code enforcement officer, but he has a privacy fence around his backyard, and the grass is like five feet high, and there's rats in the backyard. And they came out about a month ago, a contractor, they cut the grass, but he kept his gate locked, so they couldn't get back there. But there's rats running around there, and my neighbor and I have both complained to the city of Ferndale. And I came back about two weeks ago and found out that Rachel was no longer with the city. But I would appreciate it if you could do something about this, because these rats shouldn't be in the city of Ferndale running around. And I have a, I just don't want them to come back in my yard and go underneath my house or anything like that. So I would appreciate it if you could look into this.
Thanks, Ralph. We'll push, put it on to the city manager to follow up.
Okay.
Yeah, through the chair, can we just get your contact information so I can have the CED director follow up?
Right, okay. All right. You want to give it to you now, or? It's 1921 College?
Thanks, Ralph. Are you up next, Michael?
Good evening. Well, it's already here, November 18th and 19th, for Jingle and Mingle and the Underground Holiday Market. That'll be this Saturday and Sunday, on Saturday from 10:00 to 9:00 PM, and on Sunday from 11:00 to 6:00 PM. This will be located in the lower level of the DOT parking garage at the corner of West Troy and Allen Road. The event this year is, has been, with the Underground Holiday Market, it's been a complement to the Jingle and Mingle. The market will include 65 vendors, DJ sounds and live performances from the Ferndale Brass Band, and premise men's chorus. The Jingle and Mingle is presented by Les Stanford Buick GMC and co-sponsored by Credit Union One, Ascension Medical Group, WWJ 9950 News Radio, and 99.5 WYCD. And more importantly than just the holiday market is our food drive campaign. This food drive campaign is to benefit the Renaissance Vineyard Food Pantry here in Ferndale. During the Jingle and Mingle, we'll have a warming tent on the west side of the DOT out, that will be the location to where you can drop off your canned good items that you would like to donate. You will be able also to enter for a chance to win gift cards. The most important thing that we can do for anyone is to help those in need. And it's because of the Renaissance Vineyard here in Ferndale, their food pantry, that they're making a necessary need happen. And I'd like to introduce Reggie from the, a volunteer of the food pantry, to make a little comment about why we have this food pantry here in Ferndale.
Reggie Sutherland for the Renaissance Vineyard Food Pantry. Unfortunately, Doug Gillespie, who's our pantry manager, couldn't be here tonight. The pantry was started about 20-plus years ago at 1841 Pine Crest. We started with a handful of church members who saw a need, they saw food insecurity, and they stepped up and made it happen. And so now, we serve over 100 families a month. We give out over 6,000 pounds of food to families, so that's, I know that's helping. And with partners like Mike Larry and Kate Baker and others, Gleaners, Forgotten Harvest, the Boy Scouts, who have food drives for us, helps us help the community. Let's see here, what else did I have? So with this food drive that you guys are having, it will help us to make the need that the communities have less burden for them, because food is going crazy, and we like being there to help. So, thank you.
Reggie?
In case you are not able to make it to Jingle and Mingle, just want to let everybody know that we do have drop boxes at several different locations here in Ferndale, which is an expansion to the food drive from last year. And those locations are the Ferndale City Hall, the Ferndale Library, Les Stanford Buick GMC, Credit Union One, Incubizo, Walking Lightly, Hodge Subaru, Unrest Brewing, and the Ferndale DPW. I can't express the gratitude of the food pantry having open arms and welcoming us to be a part of this, because it's an honor to be a part of this. us to be a part of this because it's an honor to be a part of that. I also just, as a little fun take on the Underground Holiday Market, just to say that there'll be artist makers and bakers, but like everything else, magic blink and it might be all gone. Find everything that you never knew you wanted, gifts for friends and loved ones, or dare we say, something special just for you. See you this weekend. Thank you.
Thank you, Michael.
If I may through the chair. There's also, I just wanted to mention that there's also going to be boxes at Ferndale High School, I'm pretty sure, for the, for the pantry as well, just so you know.
Hi. Welcome.
Hello. My name is Ebony Trizell and I live on Wordsworth between Eight and Nine Mile. I wanted to come to talk about the safety on Hilton Road. As of the last three years, I've noticed people using the bike lanes as a passing lane. As someone who uses the bike lane and just, you know, do a lot of stuff in the neighborhood is really dangerous. I've seen like, I've almost got ran off the road a couple of times on that road. And so I was wondering if you all can consider putting like the, like it is on Livinoy where people can't use the, they have those.
Elimiator.
Yeah, those dividers so people can't use the bike lanes as a passing lane. You know, there's a lot of kids in the neighborhood, there's two parks over there and people are just flying down that road. Also maybe some, more police presence on that street. You know, they do a really good job during the time of pickup and drop off for the schools, having the police there, but on the off-hours, people are flying down Hilton and it's, it's dangerous, you know? And, and so I just want you all to know and maybe some consideration for some dividers. That's all.
Thank you for coming. That good suggestion?
I was lucky, lucky last year to go to Europe for 20 days on a bus tour across Europe. And I noticed in a lot of cities like Munich, Germany and all that, they blocked off the main street, all for pedestrians. And a lot of merchants in the beginning didn't like it, but they love it now because it's crowded, it's a lot safer. And I think Ferndale should maybe take a look into this, uh, to block out the downtown area between Woodward and, in the downtown area for pedestrians and see how it goes, you know? But I think it'd be a good idea. But I'd also like to say that I graduated in 1965. I grew up in Ferndale, but I graduated from Hitz Park High School. And 14 guys that I went to high school with died in Vietnam. So I respect today that people thank veterans for what they do because back during the Vietnam War, we didn't get any support, you know? And I gave four years of my life to, for this country and I just think it's time for people to respect veterans, you know? So, thank you.
Thank you and thank you for your service.
Thank you.
All right, anybody else for public comment right now? All right, um, we're going to close call to audience and move on to our next agenda item, which is a public hearing. And this is for approval of the Community Development Block Grant, also known as CDBG, project year 2020, or 24, application to fund eligible projects. And of course, we have four steps to our public hearings and we are voting on this tonight. Step one is presentation from staff. Step two, I open it up for public comment on this item only for discussion or comments from the public. And then we move into step three, which is questions of fact from council to staff and then move into a motion and debate. I'll take it over, Roger.
Thank you, Madam Mayor and Council. As the mayor introduced the item, this is a request for approval of the Community Development Block Grant for Project Year 2024. If you remember, we talked maybe six weeks ago about reprogramming past years. So we did that. We're working with the county on the funding, but this is for 2024. So as the process goes, we come to council to ask how they would like to spend the CDBG money for the upcoming year and about November of the year before. And then it takes most of 2024 for the county to work with the federal government on the funding allocation and all of those things. And then we will get the funding in late December or January of the following year. So it's a federal process. For this year, the county has told us to be prepared for a spending amount of $86,406. Last time I was here, I mentioned that there were some changes to the CDBG program from the county as our fiduciary. And one of the changes is no more than 15% can be spent on public service. So what staff is proposing is $12,691 for yard services with the remaining $73,445 for code enforcement. I think the city manager discussed last time that we would be working on a policy and bring that forward to you. So we are working on that and we'll bring that forward hopefully after the first of the year. We're in no rush for this. And if things change, we can always come back and reprogram this. But it's kind of a time-sensitive thing to get our name in the lineup with the county so that they can pursue the federal funding.
So I'm going to open it up for public comment at this time. If anybody would like to make a comment on the yard service or the allocation recommendation by our Community Economic Development Project for the $86,406. Now is the time to give comment. Uh, nope, you, sorry Zoe, you've got to use the microphone. This is a public hearing and public comment. Thank you.
Sure. My name is Zoe Bakker. Back again, I think this is a wonderful program. My one ask would be the Ferndale Accessibility and Inclusion Commission. We would love to be included in helping disseminate the information of how people can sign up. I saw the agenda item, the requirements for income and stuff of that nature, but I didn't see links for how to actually share that with people. So I know it's for folks 62 and older and then also 18 and older with certain disabilities. So we would love to make that program more widely known to our community.
Excellent. Thank you, Zoe. Any other comments? All right, I'm going to close the public comment then at 7:40 and open it up for council to ask questions to Roger. Who would like to start? Anybody have any questions? We went at this at length, was it last meeting or two meetings ago? And that we are expecting a policy recommendation from our city manager on the allocation or programs for the code enforcement part, which is the $73,445, which says in the memo here that is forthcoming to this council. Can you remind me again why our CDBG allocation goes up and down by a few thousand dollars every year? Sometimes it was, it was 90 last year and now it's 86. I know it's, you know.
Yeah. I don't know the specifics. Generally speaking, it's what the federal government allocates, which I think is probably likely, well, it's probably based on a couple of factors. Population and then income in that group. So it fluctuates.
Okay.
It's also how the county disperses it. They might take more of an admin fee one year. It might change slightly, but it does fluctuate from year to year.
No, no questions from council? Then we need a motion to proceed.
I move to approve the funding recommendations as set forth in the item background submitted by the CED Department for the attached 2024 Project Year CDBG Grant Application in the Amount of $86,406 from the account listed on the packet as submitted by the building inspector. And I'm proud that I said CDBG without tripping over my letters.
Support.
Moved by James and supported by McColsky. Any other comments at this time? All right, let her roll.
James?
Yes.
McColsky?
Yes.
Leaks May?
Yes.
Polika?
Yes.
Piana?
Yes. Thank you, Roger.
Thank you. And I will answer the, I think the public had a question about, um, people applying for the program or knowing about the program. It is full. So we currently service 23 people with about $12,000 a year, of which our third party takes a little bit of admin fee. So unfortunately, we're finding that the money is going less and less, so it's really not open. It's the existing people we have. So it's kind of limited right now.
All right. Thank you.
If I may through the chair. But individuals, when is the, when is the prime time to apply for that? Because I think it opens up every year. It's not just the same people, or is it? There's an application process, but it opens up at a specific time during the year.
I'll check with Emily. I feel like for the last couple of years, it's been full and all the existing seniors or those 18 and over that are disabled, mostly it's seniors, are in the system. I don't know, I, I think they do work with OSHA on recertifying their financial status, but I don't know that we've opened it up to new, but I can definitely find out and respond to everybody.
Thank you, Roger.
Thank you.
All right, I'm going to move on to the consent agenda and I'll read it in entirety and council can make their decisions. All right, 7A, approval of the October 23, 2023 minutes. 7B, approval and acceptance of grant funding in the amount of $64,000 from the Oakland County Parks Community Park and Trail Capital Program. 7C, consideration to suspend parking enforcement of the downtown parking system for small business Saturday on November 25th, 23, 2023. 7D, approval of payment to the state of Michigan for the Community Public Water Supply Annual Membership Fee in the amount of $7,078.43. 7E, approval to backfill an inspector two position. And 7F, approval of bills and payrolls as submitted by the finance director and subject to review by the council finance committee. What is the pleasure of council?
I'll move to approve the items as listed in the consent agenda.
Support.
Moved by James and supported by Leaks May.
James?
Yes.
Leaks May?
Yes.
McColsky?
Yes.
Polika?
Yes.
Piana?
Yes, and that is approved unanimously. All right, we're moving on swiftly to our regular agenda and we only have one item this night and it's 8A, um, consideration of bid award for the 2024 Water Main Improvement Program to inner-city contracting in the estimated amount of $1,351,943.62. James, Jim, welcome.
Thank you, Mayor, Council. So that's a big number. I wanted to provide a little bit of context. I have a short slideshow where I can kind of go over some of the, um, what and the why for Water Main Improvement Program. This is actually a picture of a gate valve being installed. It was a, one that had to get tapped onto a live main, part of the Sylvan Water Main Project. So that's actually pretty cool to see. But for context, why and how do we replace water main? One of the main issues is age. Useful service life for most water main is 50 years. That can be extended a little bit based on soil conditions and everything, but being ideal, it can last longer than that, but we should never count on it to. A lot of the water mains in the city that are currently scheduled for replacement are approaching 100 years old. That's including the water mains on Jewel and Mapledale. Older mains should be obvious, just break more. They're not as reliable as new pipes. They also rely on old technology such as a universal pipe system, which is short two-foot segments held together at joints by two bolts. Those are more apt to fail. And when they fail, we get more emergency main breaks. Those are always expensive to deal with. Anytime you're making an unplanned repair, there's going to be cost issues, scheduling issues that just make things more difficult. The sizing of the pipes also come into play. Currently Mapledale and Jewel are six-inch water main pipes. Those are going to be upsized to eight inches to deal with the increased demand on those blocks. Corrosion further causes restriction. I talk about it a lot in facilities, but if you think of a pipe like an artery, over time, that pipe starts to get a little bit slimmer and slimmer. So it goes from a six inch to maybe a five inch or five and a half inch, just reducing the flow. And that's what I mean when I say that, um, they're just decreased capacity over time. When we do these programs, what we like to do, what we always do is we try to bundle them with paving program. You'll notice that this, this one in particular has two sections of pavement included. Those will be replaced after the water main to take advantage of economy of scale. The lead service line replacement program, Mapledale doesn't have very many service connections, Jewel does, so those will be replaced prior to that project beginning. The important thing is that the work is done prior to any paving. There is a replacement schedule that we work on, DPW works on with our civil engineers at Giffles and Webster. It covers 20 years of improvements. The, the five years out gets changed quite often. Budgetary constraints can change things. Emergency conditions can change things and cause, water main breaks can, can be reprioritized to, to move certain streets up and down as necessary. The cost estimates in that 20-year plan are based on industry standard multiplied by linear foot. So if you have 10,000 feet of water main, they multiply that by the industry standard, which I believe is $350 per foot. In addition to that, there's state and federal guidelines that provide standards for municipal water supply systems. One example, which you'll actually see on this, is that we're adding a gate valve where one does not currently exist. The reason we're doing that is because the standard is that we should have 500 foot between gate valves. And that's just to minimize disruption and to decrease the size of an outage should a water main break occur. And a water main break, just to give a little background on what those are, they actually happen quite often in America, about one every two minutes. And typically they're caused by age and pressure change. Age as the, the thickness of the walls of the pipe decreases from corrosion and where it's in the soil, pressure changes can hit that and they basically split it, or sometimes they can break at joints. Luckily DPW, DPW only had about four to six water main breaks this past year. Winter is a peak time for water main breaks, so it wouldn't be surprising, knock on wood, well, not knock on wood, because I'm going to say we could get four to six more. Hopefully we get none, knock on wood. High pressure is bad. Low pressure can be bad for other reasons, not as obvious. But the city has pressure-reducing valves installed that regulate pressure of the water as it comes into the community. If we did not have those, we would be at the mercy of the pressure coming in. That would cause a lot more breaks. It is not uncommon for communities near us to have hundreds of water main breaks a year. Unplanned emergencies again are a high cost. There's a few reasons, but one of the big reasons is you can't actually send anything out for a competitive bid. And this, I almost stole directly from the facility's presentation, there is a cost for aging water infrastructure. The cost is always higher for unplanned repairs, as I've said, but additionally, there's a cost because you have increased deterioration, decreased performance. When you have downtime, that means that members of the community are not getting water. There's actually 80/20 split roughly east versus west for the improvement program over the last 10 years or so. And that's just because the soil quality on the east side of Woodward is a little bit worse and some of the infrastructure there is aging a little bit more. So a lot of the improvement program has been focused on that side. Again, old technology, the universal joint only has two bolts, two-foot segments, there's just a very high rate of failure there. So that's the reason that we need to get rid of the old stuff. And then additionally, something that's obvious but kind of gets forgotten is that water lost from leaks is just money down the drain. That water, we pay for it, whether it goes into the ground, goes into a sewer, or it goes into homes. So these are the numbers for the Water Main Improvement Program budget versus as bid. The budget numbers are what Giffles and Webster put together based on the, the amount of work. And in every case, our low bid has came under. As I mentioned, we do have a gate valve installation that was not part of the budgetary process because that was work that was added at a later date. Construction administration, you'll notice, is significantly lower. That's basically just for the, the contractor that won the bid thinks it'll take a little bit less time than they thought. Maybe there'd be a few less mobilizations, so we saved a significant amount there. And total, the project with the added gate valve comes in about $110,000 cheaper than we assumed it would. And that is about it.
Thanks, Jim.
Thank you.
Are there any questions from council about this contract or this bid?
Through the chair, I just, I just have a quick question about- Through the chair, I just, I just have a quick question about that budget slide. It's my understanding that often we build into contracts in anticipation of some kind of overage. Is that included in those numbers already? Or might there be some additional unanticipated spending that, you know, just seems to happen due to delays or something unanticipated?
I believe there is some, there will be some cost savings based on the contract, the way it's written up. Some of the, some of the estimates may not occur. Most likely, what'll happen is it will be a little bit more. Typically, if I understand it, these are pretty close to accurate. Sometimes additional costs are incurred, and I don't think this includes a contingency.
Contingency, I think that's the word I was thinking of. Thank you.
Through the chair, since inner-city contracting was the subcontractor of choice for the East Keenborn Reconstruction Project, did we see any sort of contingency funding for that project? Did they go over budget, or were they in line with budget?
I do not have that information.
Okay.
But I can get it.
Okay.
I do know that ICC was a subcontractor this year for the pavement program, and they did good work. Giffords and Webster's has worked with them in the past. They've always had good relationship with them. Their jobs get done, they get done on time. So it, it's not a, it's not a contractor that they had any reservations with.
Through, through the chair. Actually, that's the, the point that I wanted to, to make is that they were a subcontractor. Have they ever been the primary contact contractor or City of Ferndale?
I do not know. I don't believe so.
The second lowest bid, eminent excavation? Have they ever been a contractor for the City of Ferndale?
I don't believe so. I know FDM has done it, I want to say, the past three years in a row.
It's just interesting that their bid, the second lowest bid, was much closer to our budgeted amount than the lowest amount, which is 10% lower than what we budgeted. I just think that's, I'm concerned that they're going to cut corners being that low.
Well, yeah, Giffords and Webster will make sure to do inspections. I mean, they have to go through a pretty rigorous process. Sometimes, sometimes contractors leave a little bit on the table. That's just how the process works, but your point is noted.
Also through the, sorry, this is coming out of the Streets and Sewer Bond? Or is this coming out of our water fund?
I believe it is water fund, and then the, the paving will come out of Act 50.
Act 51?
Yeah, 51, sorry.
Okay, no other questions, Mayor?
Thank you. I think we're done exhausting questions from council, then we need a motion to move forward.
All right, I'll go for it. I move to approve the bid award for the 2024 Water Main Improvement Program to inner-city contracting in the estimated amount of $1,351,943.62, with the expense charged to Water Sewer Fund Capital Outlay Account Number listed in the agenda, road-related improvements charged to Road Bond Account Number listed in the agenda, and approve the DPW Director to sign contract documents following approval of the city attorney.
Support.
Moved by James and supported by Pollocka.
James?
Yes.
Pollocka?
Yes.
Leaks May?
Yes.
Mikulski?
Yes.
Piana?
Yes. All right, that's it for the regular agenda items, and we're moving on to call the council, starting with department updates led by our city manager.
Thank you, Mayor.
We will begin with a update from the city clerk.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. As you may be aware, we had an election on November 7th, on Tuesday, so I just wanted to give you some updates on that. We had about 24% of voters turn out for the election. Roughly, if you were to look at the absentee voter ballots that were cast before the election, in addition to the ones that were cast on the day of the election, about 62% of people actually cast their ballots using AV ballots. And then about 1% cast them at the early voting site, and then everybody else cast them in person. Let's see, on the night of the election, there was some confusion about Precinct 8, so I just wanted to kind of address that with you as well. Basically, Oakland County had some issues with the system that transmits the data of election results from our tabulating machines to Oakland County. And so they were calling all the cities on election night, letting us know that we should be using our FPT, FTP. There we go. And that was down as well. And so our, our backup to that is to bring the flash drives from the tabulator to Oakland County. As soon as Precinct 8, which was appear to be pending throughout the night on, on Oakland County's website, as soon as that was processed, we sent our deputy city clerk immediately to Oakland County to get that flash drive over to them to have the updated election results. What we didn't realize, what Oakland County didn't realize, was that, basically, that they are always expecting three different sources of votes now. One is the absentee voter ballots, one is the in-person ballots that are cast on Election Day, and one are the early voting ballots that are cast prior to Election Day. Out of the 48 votes that were cast at the early voting site, zero of those were cast from Precinct 8. And so what happened was that the system that they use was anticipating that they would have results coming in from 8, but because there were zero ballots that were coming in, it kind of just sat there. And so when I brought that to the attention of the Director of Elections for Oakland County, they were able to manually push that forward. But given that it was still a pilot program, it was one of those things that nobody knew was going to happen at the time. So the election results were, were accurate earlier in the night than we had known. But that was what happened there with Precinct 8. Let's see here. And just so you're aware, starting this year, some of the election laws changed. So as of this last Friday, individuals who had, you know, submitted their ballot and the signatures either didn't match, or they forgot to sign the ballot envelopes, those were to be in by our office by 4:00 PM on the Friday, or, sorry, the Friday following the election. We had four ballots that were pending at the end of election night. Three of those ballots have been cured. I will be meeting with the Oakland County canvases tomorrow, and they will be tabulating those three last ballots tomorrow. And then military and overseas ballots, they now have six days following the elections to get those into us, as long as they are postmarked by Election Day. We mailed out five ballots, none of those were returned to us this election. So we only have three ballots that are currently pending. Let's see, some folks have asked about the recount process. Basically, somebody cannot, or candidate cannot request a recount until it has, the election has been canvassed, which can be as late as the end of November. And they advise that if you are going to do that, it's all handled by Oakland County. So aside from that, I just wanted to say a huge thank you to all of our election inspectors who helped us out. We really can't do that without them. I know Chris Bantam is in the audience, Zo Backer was here earlier, as well as Reggie, and then Councilman Pollocka as well. So a big thank you to all those people who have helped us. Thank you.
Thank you, Dean, and thank you to everybody for a really well-managed election.
Yeah, thank you, Dean. My credit to the city clerk's office for running an excellent, excellent administrative election. Jim, we're going to have you come right back up.
Just a few quick, brief updates. Residential leaf pickup is going strong. See the website for the schedule. Please park off-street if able. Try to avoid blocking traffic and bike lanes with the leaves. The street sweeper will follow the leaf pickup starting now. Woodward updates, the paving is nearly complete. You, if you're around the city, the weekend was pretty hectic. That pace is going to continue throughout this week, minus the paving. There'll be people striping, there's going to be structure adjustments, and so everyone understands that is a structure adjustment is just when a manhole is no longer level with the roadway after it's paved. Those just need to be worked up, brought up level, so you're not bumping over them every day. It's going to be a busy few weeks, but it will be done. Thanksgiving trash pickup is going to be delayed one day. If they normally get you on Thursday, they're going to get you on Friday, and then Friday will be pushed to Saturday. Throughout that Thanksgiving break, DPW will be here. So if there are issues, please call UC Click Fix. And for something that's more or less an emergency, call the police dispatch non-emergency number, and then get ahold of DPW.
Chair? Leaf pickup. What's the rest of the schedule, and will it be extended?
It's alternating, it's west side, east side, west side. I will have to...
West side is this week.
Yep, west side's this week.
It is.
Yeah.
Extensions are based on climate conditions and needs of the operations.
Yeah, it's too early to say if we would need an extension. I wouldn't think we would, based on the number of leaves we've been picking up this week, so.
I just see a lot of trees still have leaves on them.
They do, but they're coming down quick. This week was the first week it was really heavy.
Through the chair, do you have Socras' final curb side collection date?
I do not, on me.
We can get that for the next meeting?
We can.
It's in the coming weeks.
And through the chair, I had a quick question. Is there any possibility that residents can have like a sign placed on their street so that they know to move their cars off the street, so the pickup, the leaf pickup can be easier?
We've done some, we've used signs for street sweeping. It's, it's one of those things where it ends up taking a lot of time, and we just don't have the staff to put the signs out. I think at some point in the future, it would be a great thing to have a little bit more of a policy where we have smaller sections, and then we have maybe some permanent signage that kind of say, every other Monday, this street gets done, every other Tuesday, this street gets done. But really, right now, it's difficult to just put signs out. And people, while some people do read those signs, it's kind of a big investment for the people that don't read the signs and do park on the street anyway.
All right, next we will move on to Fire Chief Robinson.
Good evening. So that's a nice segue, but I will remind people, a nice plug for our council department is the leaf pickup schedule is on the city's website, so you can go on there and see for your neighborhood when it's coming, so you know when to put your leaves out. Try not to put them out too far ahead, because then they just make a mess. But with that note, when you're piling all your leaves on the street, reminder for people not to park your cars on top of the piles of leaves. Leaves with hot engines and exhausts are a really bad combination, and they can cause fires. And you catch leaves on fire, they're under your car, they catch your car on fire. You don't want to explain that one to your insurance company when you lose your entire car. So we're asking people, please, please, please do not park on top of piles of leaves. If you put your leaves out, you know you're putting them out for them to be picked up. Again, that goes to the other point, try to have your cars off the street so they can clean them up. Also, going into this time of year, for people with wood burning fireplaces, reminder, have them inspected, have them cleaned, because that's what keeps them safe, so you don't get chimney fires or house fires because your chimney is in disrepair or hasn't been cleaned or has cracks. So ensure the safety of your home, so you can enjoy the loveliness of a fireplace and not have it turn into something negative. So, thank you.
Great recommendations. Next, we'll have Manuel Johnson from Parks and Rec.
Good evening, everybody. Just a few announcements from Parks and Recreation. First of all, we are going to be partnering with DDA to once again bring back our Santa Parade, in which we'll be bringing Santa down from the North Pole to visit everybody at several different parks before ending up at Shiffer Park. The event will take place on Saturday, December 2nd, from 1:00 to 4:00 PM. We'll be at Wilson Park at 1:00, Gary Park at 1:30, and then we'll be at Shiffer from 2:00 to 4:00. And at Shiffer, you'll have the opportunity to take pictures with Santa, have a meet and greet with him. We'll have several crafts available. Two of them will be from countries around the world, one of them being Japan, the other one being Italy. We'll have a letter-writing station where you're able to write down all of your wishes and everything for Christmas, and we'll have the mailbox available for you to drop them into. We'll also have smores available, along with a fire pit for you to cook your smores. And we'll be getting cookies from...
The Corner, that is confirmed, right?
Yeah, we'll be getting cookies donated to us from the Corner Restaurant that's over there on Planet V. The event is completely free, it's available to everybody, so pick a time, come out and see Santa, and have a great time. Speaking of those letters to Santa, after they, we are done with the Santa Parade, the Santa mailbox will be moved over to our office in Incubizo, which is at 1938 Burdette Street. And you, members of the community, anybody at home, feel free to write down your Christmas wish list, or have your kids write down their Christmas wish list, drop it in that mailbox, and then we'll make sure to get it to Santa so that he can write you back. We'll be accepting those letters up until December 15th. And then the last thing we have, we are opening, we're still accepting registrations for our Little Eagles Basketball Program, which is set to begin practices in early December, and games are beginning in mid-January. However, we are still looking for several volunteer coaches to assist with that endeavor. And that's especially important now because we are going to be, for the first time, having an all-girls league that is accompanied by the normal co-ed leagues that we do, which is actually already filled up. So if you're interested in coaching, or you need more information about the program, it's available for ages, or for grades K through 6, please contact Robert Birch, Deputy Director of Parks and Recreation, for more information. And that's all.
Through the chair.
Sure.
Not a lot of activity happens at Incubizo regarding the general public. Could we consider a different location for the Santa mailbox? Maybe City Hall, or maybe even better yet, the library? Where you'd have more, you know, more, more active kids going to, you know, I mean, they're not going to be coming to City Hall, they'll definitely be going to the library, but I don't think they're going to be hanging out at Incubizo.
Right, yeah. Part of it was we wanted to get people out to visit us at Incubizo, but that is a great suggestion. I think we will reach out to the library to see what we could potentially do in terms of partnership with that. Thank you for the suggestion.
Sure, thank you.
All right, with the downtown, that's a good segue into also inviting the DDA Director, Jenny Beaker.
Good evening. So to echo from Michael Larry's comments earlier, we're really excited about the jingle and mingle and underground market that's happening this weekend. It's going to be on Troy Street at the DOT parking garage and the pop-up park next to it. So we're just really excited about this to draw attention to our fabulous downtown area. The DDA is going to be present at the Underground Market. We're going to have an information station where we can encourage folks to get out and explore the rest of our brick and mortar downtown. And then we also hope that this is going to encourage people to remember that the DOT's got spots, so park at the DOT when you're shopping for the holiday season, even on Saturday, September 25th, when parking is free. So thank you very much, council, for doing that to support our downtown businesses with that free parking encouragement on Shop Small Saturday. It's been a challenging few months for our Ferndale businesses with the road diet and construction, so we're asking folks to please come out this holiday season and give them a little bit of love. We're excited about that to be completed, and people to have a more accessible downtown that they can enjoy again. So yeah, please come out. Many businesses will have extended hours during November and December. So if you're looking for gifts that fit any size, we also have Ferndale dollars that can be used at 30 locations in downtown. So those fit everyone, and they're, they're good, that's a great currency. Additionally, Oakland County Main Street and Genesis Credit Union are... Additionally, Oakland County Main Street and Genesis Credit Union are promoting Shop Small and Shop Local. They're sponsoring a local gem sweepstakes that is going to be running now through November 25th. We've got some flyers here, and throughout some of our businesses. Folks can capture their favorite Ferndale spots with selfies. You can make multiple submissions and have a chance to win up to more than $1,500 in prizes. You can get more information on that at oakgov.com/shopsmall. Oakgov.com/shopsmall is that website. And thanks again to Parks and Rec, reminding us that Santa is going to be at Shiffr Park. Did I mention our patio zones are also in effect? They've got warm holiday beverages, too, for the season. Have not had any tonight, I promise. But yes, Santa will be at Shiffr Park on December 2nd. So thanks very much to our businesses who are supporting and giving back to the community feel, and making it a great holiday season. Thank you.
That was awesome, Jenny. Thank you. And finally, just from my office, just a reminder, city offices will be closed next week in observation of Thanksgiving on Thursday, and the day after on Friday, echoing the state's holiday schedule. And I want the—is it—it is next week, right? Okay, good. He just made me think it wasn't next week. And just also take the opportunity to offer my gratitude to our 24/7 employees at the Police and Fire Department and Public Works Department. My gratitude for sacrificing time with your family and friends for serving the community. So, thank you, Mayor. That's it.
Excellent. Thanks. Well, I'm going to start with Mayor Proton tonight. Sorry to catch you off-guard.
Yeah, no, it's okay. I've been pondering what I wanted to talk about tonight. Certainly, well done, Dean and your team—the Dean team—on a well-run election, and congratulations to Mayor-elect Raylon Leaks-May, and Councilmember-elect—Councilmembers-elect, Donnie Johnson and Rolanda Kelly. It was a great comfort to me, candidly, to know that there were very capable, very passionate candidates running in this race. You know, serving the public is—a complicated thing, and a lot of intentions and emotions go into it, and it was—it was, like I said, a great relief to know that there were really capable, strong folks to step in, so that I didn't feel like I needed to. And—oh, I also wanted to thank the Elks for a really wonderful evening last Thursday, where they recognized a number of, you know, such-and-such of the year, Employee of the Year for DPW, Police and Fire, City Hall, Citizen of the Year, Senior Citizen of the Year. And it was just a really lovely evening. I very much appreciate the Elks for hosting this event and making it happen, and to House Bayou for providing some really delicious food. And lastly, I'd just been contemplating a lot over the last several weeks. You know, a tremendous amount of pain and conflict happening in the world. And last night, I went to the Michigan Coalition for Human Rights annual dinner, and there was a really great talk by Aaron Keith of the Detroit Justice Center on rehumanization, because so often, dehumanization is a predicate to violence. Dehumanizing people, you know, referring to them as rats, or vermin, or dogs, or anything but sentient human beings, you know, is used as a justification to hurt others. And so I think it's really important that during this time especially, and moving into next year, which is going to be a horrific slugfest of a presidential election and a existential threat to democracy, frankly, that we be really, really thoughtful about the language that we use about other people, and be thoughtful and critical about the language that political leaders use about other human beings. So, just something that's been on my mind, and invite you to contemplate it as well.
Really appreciate your comments on what's happening overseas in the country specifically, but I know what you're talking about. But thank you for that. Councilman McColsky, would you like to know?
Echo all of your sentiments, especially in terms of the election. I—I didn't want to bother you the next morning, and yet you were just so kind and so upbeat after such a long night, and it was—it was absolutely amazing, and I really commend you and your team for doing everything. The only other thing I had tonight was, it is Hunger and Homelessness Awareness Week, and there is a website where individuals who are seeking help can look for help. That website is HHWeek.org. It's just a wealth of information. As we heard earlier today, there's—a very defined need within our community, and people are hurting. We have to—we have to try to connect them to resources where we can, and do better for them. And this is—this is one small step. Other than that, that's it for me tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilman Pollock?
A couple of things. So to springboard off of Councilwoman James's comments, I also want to thank the Dean Bean Counting Machine. It was an incredible election. As always, there is at least one weird, odd-ball thing that happens during the day, and that one odd-ball thing, you were able to help us with at Precinct One, and got it cleared up, and the very nice lady now knows where she needs to vote. And so, yeah, it was—it was a really great day, and I want to congratulate Mayor-elect Leaks-May. I'm very much looking forward to working with you for the next two years. And a couple other things in regards to leaves. I always try to make sure that people know, if you live on a street where you have one-sided parking, like I do, try to put your leaves on the side of the street that doesn't have the parking. That way, you don't have to worry about reducing the number of parking spaces on the street. And finally, for DPW Director Jamison, I have a request. Several years ago—well, many years ago, probably 10 or 12 years ago, we were given a figure from SACRA of how much per ton it costs the city for trash, what we pay for trash per ton, and then what it costs per ton for recycling that we get back. And I always remember that the numbers were oddly opposite. Like, it was—we paid 28-something per ton for garbage, but we received $52 per ton for recycling. Of course, because recycling, it's a lot more to reach a ton than it does garbage. But it'd be nice to know what those numbers are today. So, that's all I have. Mayor? Oh, Happy Thanksgiving, everyone.
So—so first, I'd like to, one, thank—I'd like to thank our financial task force. I don't know if you know, but they meet—how often?
About every Thursday.
About every Thursday. Where they're discussing important initiatives for the city, as far as how to use our facilities, and discussing whether not to have the head leaf on the ballot next year. I just want to thank this group of people, because they're—these are volunteers, and they're taking their time to help us make some important decisions. So, I'd encourage you to watch the videos. If you're not able to attend the meetings, I encourage you to watch the videos. They are provided on YouTube. So please, that way you can find out exactly where the conversations are going, and perhaps maybe you can attend council and have some suggestions of your own. But please, I just—I really want to just shout out to this group of people, and to our city manager, and to the staff members that come to those meetings. Some important conversations are being had, so hats off to that committee. Also, I want to thank the Ferndale High School Marching Band on their second-place finish in the state. I don't know if you know this, but this particular year, marching band had about 40-plus new students attend, enroll in band, and a lot of those were eighth graders. So for them to be second in the state, they're going to be a force to be reckoned with in the future. So congratulations to them. Thank you, Dean, and—what did we call it?
The Dean Bean Counting Machine.
Yes, that. For such a wonderful election, and handling everything, even the hiccups with grace, like you do. I want to thank the community—for coming out and casting their votes, whether you did it by absentee, whether you did it early, whether you did it walking in on the precincts the day of. Congratulations to Councilmembers-elect Donnie Johnson and Rolanda Kelly. And I particularly want to thank the community for their faith in my leadership by voting me in as your mayor-elect. I look forward to working with you all come December—excuse me, not December, January. Well, we're still doing work here. I'm still your council member. And this—and I'm just humbled by your support and faith in my leadership. So thank you to everyone that voted, volunteers, my entire council for your support, and I look forward to a great coming year. And I want to thank the current mayor for all of her support and mentorship throughout all of this. It's a difficult job, and she's handled it with grace, being a public servant for the last 14 years, so. And one last thing, I want to wish you all a happy, prosperous, and blessed Thanksgiving. Enjoy it with your families, and that's it for me, Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you. Well, I get to echo the fifth echo of the election. I'm just really proud that we don't seem to have election deniers in the United States this time around, and—which is just a sense of relief, and it really is—I always say, local democracy of—local government is the front line of democracy, and local elections really embodies that for me, and we do so well here, and so thank you, Dean, and the volunteers and everybody. Also, this past week—or last week—was the Elks Law and Order Night for the awards, but we also had our annual dinner of the auxiliary police, honoring our volunteer police officers who help in our downtown, and augment our police department to help keep our safe—our community safe. And then I just want to announce tomorrow is my last mayor's business council, which is a convening of some of our medium-to-large-size industrial tech sort of companies. It's an odd mix, because we got an odd mix in our city. And just really pleased for all of the leadership out of the business community, supporting the mayor's business council, which is really to help make sure our business-friendly environment here remains so, and we implement ideas we're hearing from—from our business community. And then finally, I do want to say thank you to folks for their patience on Woodward. Two weeks ago, this council voted to extend the hours in which paving has occurred, and I know everybody is hearing it late into the night. I hear it, and I've been woken up to the droning sound coming up and down the street, and so I just really—I know it's all an inconvenience, and it took me 10 minutes just to go to the market and come back around the 696 interchange the other night. So—but we're almost done. And with that, I just want to say, congratulations to Mayor-elect Raylon Leaks-May. I'm just so pleased to pass the baton to someone I fully trust to take the helm for our community in the mayor role. And also, congratulations to Council-elect Donnie Johnson and Rolanda Kelly. I look forward to helping them onboard, which is what I call this period between the election versus the swearing-in. We have one of the out-of-city charters around, and nobody thinks—they're like, "Why are you still mayor? The election just happened." And it's a conversation—I'm telling everybody, "I'm still mayor to the end of the year." People just don't understand why I'm still here, but it's in our city charter, and I call it the onboarding period for the new people, and—it's a time for them to decompress from the election, and start learning the ropes, and getting acquainted with the city manager and other department heads. So with that, Happy Thanksgiving. Be safe. Hug your family, tell you love them, and have a really great holiday, folks. See you at the end of November.